Hello Joel.
Hello. Good.
Good evening. It's six P M. Welcome to the Henry County Commissioners December eighteenth meeting. Like for you, please, if you would, please rise and follow us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a short prayer. Our heavenly father, thank you for the opportunity to be together this evening. We pray for health and happiness for everyone with this with the coming season, Christmas season. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in your name we pray. Amen. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion except the minutes is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion except the claims presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll?
Make a motion except payrolls presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We have in our notebooks the treasurer's monthly report for October twenty twenty four. Is there a motion?
Make a motion except is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. We also have a clerk's monthly report for November of twenty twenty four.
Make a motion except it is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes three zero. Under the food and beverage claims, we have a claim for the Memorial Park Pond affidavit twenty sixteen dash ninety-two to Greensboro Sand and Gravel LLC invoice zero zero seven zero zero eight zero zero nine for seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Make a motion to approve the claim.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
Corey and Penny cannot be here this evening.
We don't have a chamber update or an insurance update. We have the Henry County Health Department.
Miranda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Miranda Wright and I am the coordinator.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
Is it green?
It's green. Can you hear me? Okay. So my name is Miranda Wright and I am the Henry County Live Coalition Coordinator with the Henry County Health Department. And I just came, I gave you some pictures of our students and I just want to read something, an announcement. Live Coalition is thrilled to announce the selection of six outstanding students as the twenty 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 five student ambassadors for Henry County. These students have been chosen to represent our community at the National Leadership Forum in Washington DC in February. This prestigious event will provide them with the opportunity to enhance their leadership skills, gain valuable insights into substance misuse prevention, and bring back ideas to make a positive impact in Henry County. The winning candidates are Gwen Beavers, a freshman Blue River Junior Senior High, Alana Connor, sophomore Blue River Valley Junior Senior High, Grayson Baker, Junior Shenandoah High School, Owen Barrett, Junior Newcastle High School, Elijah Blankenship, Junior Newcastle High School, Cameron Brewer, Junior Knightstown High School. These students were selected through a competitive process that included an application, an in-depth interview, and a review of their leadership potential, passion and commitment to the Live Coalition's mission of building resilience in youth and preventing generational substance misuse. The National Leadership Forum is an annual event that gathers youth leaders, coalition members, and prevention advocates from across the country. As student ambassadors, these six individuals will have the opportunity to network with other young leaders, participate in workshops, and learn effective strategies to address substance misuse and promote mental health. A special thank you to the commissioners for making this trip possible through their generous allocation of opioid settlement funds. Your support is instrumental in empowering our youth and equipping them with the tools they need to make a lasting impact on our community. We deeply appreciate your commitment to creating a healthy and more resilient Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the coroner's office? Thank you. Surveyor?
What?
Highway.
Highway.
Highway Department? No, I said highway department. There you go. Yes.
They want to do the bids now or what?
Yeah. You guys want to go ahead and go over the bids now, or you want to wait till later to do them?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the pipe. We'll just say per low. First item is gasoline, item one. Two bidders, Falmouth and Keystone. Falmouth was low by a pretty good margin. Item two is diesel fuel number one. Falmouth and Keystone both bid. Falmouth was low. Item three, diesel fuel number two. Falmouth and Keystone both bid. Falmouth was low and diesel fuel number two off-road. Falmouth and Keystone both bid and Falmouth was low.
Unless there's any questions, I'll make the motion to accept the low bid of Falmouth Farms to buy for gasoline, diesel fuel number one, diesel fuel number two, and diesel fuel number two off-road.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Item five, asphalt pavement materials and miscellaneous. We had four bidders for F O B plant, in other words, picked up as a plant. Hot mix asphalt, E and B paving, R mix, highway, and Irving materials. The highway is a delivered product. It's a cold mix. Okay, a patch mix is what it is. And we would we would recommend to accept all bids and use low bid dependent upon product-specific need, availability, and proximity to project. Because they're so spread out, some of the project. Now, we had two bidders that before had bid. One was a milestone. They didn't bid. I don't know. There's another county that didn't bid either. I don't know what the problem is, but and the other one was Caldwell. They did not bid.
I make the motion to accept all bids on item number five asphalt pavement materials and miscellaneous. Accept all bids and use low bid dependent upon product-specific need, availability, and proximity to the project.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
The next item under that same item five was furnished, delivered, and placed hot mix asphalt on the road, and the only bidder was E and B paving. So we would recommend to accept E and B.
I make the motion to accept E and B paving for the furnished, delivered, and placed hot mix asphalt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
And that bid was per ton. And if they go more than twelve miles inside the county, then they they charge more, okay? Or TAC is included in that. Item six is crushed stone. We had three bidders, Irving Materials, Rush County Stone, and US Aggregates. We recommend to accept all three bids.
I'll make the motion to accept all three bids on item six crushed stone.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Item seven is gravel and sand. We had one bidder, Irving Materials, and we recommend to accept I M I's bid.
I make the motion to accept I M I's bid on item seven gravel and sand.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Item number eight is pipe and miscellaneous. We have a breakdown sheet and it's long and extended. All right, so we would recommend to use the low bid on any product, whether it's pipe, whether it's GeoGrid, whether it's GeoTextile Fabric, any of those for our purpose and for ordering.
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion to use low bid on all of the items under item eight, pipe and miscellaneous. Is that what you're recommending, the low bid on depending upon what it is, pipe miscellaneous?
Yes.
Okay. With E three bridge, Civilcon, and metal culverts? Does that suffice the?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
Last item is item nine calcium chloride. We had one bidder, and that was Great Lakes Chloride. And we would recommend to accept Great Lakes Chloride.
I'll make the motion to accept Great Lakes Chloride's bid on item nine calcium chloride.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
There's bids to carry over through twenty twenty five. We've had four contractor, well, two contractors and two material suppliers that were willing to carry their bid over from twenty-four through twenty-five, holding that same price. Okay, and that is for liquid asphalt was asphalt materials. Large equipment rental and labor is Duncan Robertson. Small equipment rental and labor is East Central Contractors. And for pre-engineered prefabricated bridges is E and H Bridge and Grading. Those four.
And these were the contract extensions that you sent us earlier today?
Yes. Yes.
I will make the motion to approve the contract extensions carry over through twenty twenty five for liquid asphalt, large equipment rental. Sorry, Steve, did I do something wrong? Just have to clear your throat. Small equipment rental labor and pre-engineered prefabricated bridges.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero.
Joel had put the agreements together for those four, and I have a copy unless you already have one.
I just had nothing to copy.
You've already reviewed this, Joel?
I have actually prepared those yesterday.
Joe Wiley on here twice on the signature, so I'm just marking him out. I wanted to put my name in.
Mm-hmm. I got copies. Harry needs copies for him. I got copies for him. Guess I can hand it out now. Let me keep one in case you have.
I ain't reading all that.
We already have that. We already have.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we already have it.
I'll get the suppliers and contractor signatures and get them back to you.
Sorry, Brayden, I went ahead and made copies.
The next item is she's, Brayden's ready. Culverts. We have a large number of large culverts in this county, and a lot of them are concrete boxes. Some of them are large pipe. And the last inspection of those culverts was done in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. Were due. And there's several that haven't, that need replaced now. We've had a a bridge, well, it's called a bridge, but it's actually two pipe, two large pipe. And the total span of each pipe added together is greater than twenty feet, so the federal highway calls it a bridge, okay? And it's failing. So we got a bridge to replace already. We've got to get working on these. There's some, there's one on five hundred south. I was looking at the numbers today, west of Wilbur Wright Road, or by the Green Benz. There's another one up, I believe it's up on seven hundred north. It's in pretty poor condition. Another one on eight fifty east, south of seven hundred north. The list goes on and on. And what we want to do is, is some of them I think should probably have a load limit placed on them. To what extent? Don't know. That's why we need some help. So what we're asking for is permission to enter into a contract with S J C A to do a culvert inspection and inventory. They did the last one in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen, so they have all these previous culverts in their in a spreadsheet in their office, and they're prepared to do it. They have the time and the manpower. And we need to know where we're at and if we need to post any of these. Because I got a feeling we're going to post a few. What we need is money to get them replaced. I mean, they're not cheap either. I replaced a bridge-type structure in another county. Sixty-foot-long pieces of concrete box culvert. I believe they were twelve by seven or fourteen by seven. Two, set side by side. Material alone for just the concrete boxes was two hundred thousand dollars delivered to the site. So that gives you an idea how expensive these can get. So so our request is to allow us to enter into a contract. The total the total bill as you can see is one eighty-four nine sixty-eight. Perry, is that right? I thought it was. I don't think, I don't think it's right.
One ninety-seven three forty.
That's better. Yeah, that's it. Because they planned on doing it in ninety.
Well, I take the one, wait a minute. He said, Perry, you said one eighty-four, so we're going to go with one eighty-four.
I like that better myself.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the original, we were talking about it, talking about doing twenty-four and twenty-five. But since we're at the end of twenty-four, now it's twenty-five and twenty-six, so we've got another year of inflation to hit us, and that's why it went up.
Do any of these qualify for any kind of aid?
The federal highway will not pay for culverts. Culvert inspection or culvert replacement unless it's associated with a bridge.
How many of these are borderline? Any?
Oh, you mean?
Being a bridge.
I.
As far as your span, because you said the one there was basically a bridge instead of a box.
Well, one I was looking at today is a sixteen-foot span. I believe that was the one on five hundred south. Sixteen-foot span, so we need to replace it with probably another sixteen-foot span. The bridge I was talking about, our two culverts over twenty feet, so you figure you're probably going to be up around thirty thirty to thirty-five foot structure. All right, that that structure, at the cheapest I can put one in, would probably be around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a bridge. Now, if we went with two box culverts, you know, the cost for twelve by seven or fourteen by seven was two hundred thousand dollars for sixty-foot, and it'll take sixty feet each. Yes, to do it.
I was just asking the question, just see if there was anything we could get assistance with, because we never have enough money.
If I can get it, I'll get it. I wish, now, the community crossings has been moved up to one and a half million dollars a year, all right? And we could probably get state money, community crossings, but with chip seal and bridges, and I mean, it's just, one and a half million will not go very far. So that means you could do you could bid two million to get the one and a half million, seventy-five percent. They'll pay seventy-five percent of the construction only, no inspection, no design, and no right-of-way.
How often should we have our how often should the inspections take place of the culverts and bridges?
My opinion, ten, eleven years.
So we're at that?
Current, yeah, we're there.
We're at that, okay. That's what I thought.
I mean, our bridges are inspected every two years. And if they're a bridge, a type, that could a member fail and could fall, then it's every one year. Like steel trusses, some steel trusses are like.
Thank you.
Every year. And yes, the money is there. We will.
I was getting ready to ask you, do you have the money to cover this, Joe?
It will be in the long-range plan. Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with S J C A and the highway department for inspecting the small structures for a hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
Well, dang, I was going to approve the other one.
Well, I would approve it for eighty-four, but Perry'd come up out of his seat.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thank you.
I do have one other small item. Roundabout. U S thirty-six and Raider Road. It's coming. Okay? I don't know what the exact bid date is, but I last I heard, it was after the first of the year here. And in a team's meeting that we had online, I brought up the issue of maintenance on that roundabout back on to the north and south, in other words, on Raider Road. You know, we county shouldn't be doing that maintenance on their roundabout.
Agreed.
So Steve was at that meeting also, and they'd said, or one of the people from NDOT said, okay, we can put together agreement, maintenance agreement between the county and the state that they will maintain those areas. And, you know, you're talking curbs, pavement markings, ditches, drainage of different kinds, pipe. Well, Mr. Russ had called his contact twice now, right? And asked her about where's this agreement? She was sending it up. She was sending it up, up, upstairs to see if they could get it. I don't think her supervisors want to do this. And we were told that they would. Uh, I didn't know if there was any way possible that a letter could be sent to Endot questioning this, and why haven't received it to date? Okay?
Joel, did you draft that, or?
Yeah. I, I know you and I had talked about this, and then you sent the email today, I'm sure you've talked about it with the other two as well, it makes no sense for us to have to maintain that, it's not ours, we're not doing it, we're not digging it, so.
We didn't want it.
Yeah, we didn't want it, um, so.
Our constituents didn't want it either, so.
So, um, that doesn't have to be in a form of a motion, does it? Yeah, so if you want to work with, now, do you think it's best to come in conjunction of commissioners and highway and, and the attorney, or however you feel like it's best will get the most impact, you know, list the survey, you know? I don't know what-
They purchase it, and then when it's not to their advantage, it becomes ours. And it happens a lot. Okay?
Well, so we had that on that driveway out on thirty-six where their markers were at, and they said it wasn't theirs anymore, cause they didn't want to repair it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, it, it'd be nice to have something in writing that we could fall back on.
Yeah, so if you want to work with Joel, get that. Or they're just sternly as, can be worded without using swear words.
Okay.
But I don't know, maybe a swear word or two will work, I don't know.
But, you know, ten, fifteen years, when something needs, you know, maintenance, the question's gonna be, you know, you go to the state, and the state's gonna say, no, that's yours, I, I, I guarantee it. That's what'll be said. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Braden with the reimbursement, training reimbursement agreement.
Yeah, um, CDL agreement, I believe, is finally, um, been drafted the way, um, way I think we all want it and agree for it to be. Our first employee has agreed to this and has signed it. I made a copy of it for all three of you, Debbie has the original. Um, the employee signed it along with myself, so just want to see if you guys, um, be willing to agree to this, uh, agreement and send this, uh, employee to CDL Training School, get a CDL license.
We, we approved the, the body of the agreement, I think, last month or a month before, I can't remember which.
Yeah.
This is just, um, agreeing for Lonnie bowling to go, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Planning Commissioner, Tom Green.
Did he say don't start?
So what did he say? He said, don't start.
There you go, finally.
I think you have before you a, uh, a briefing that was given to the planning commission last month, if you had a chance to review that. And that was a, uh, request to rezone property in Middletown by ASP Bolt Realty. They have eighteen acres up there, they'd like to develop into a plant. Um, a small manufacturing facility, that passed the planning commission's review unanimously. Uh, so I'm here before you tonight, uh, requesting a zone map change. You can read through that, if you want to read through that, you have it all, but it's the standard resolution we always use in the, uh, rezone procedure. We have a representative here, uh, if you have any questions, if you don't understand anything in the briefing you were given.
And, uh, if memory serves me correctly, uh, the president of the Middletown-
Yes, Middletown, Middletown support-
In favor of-
Absolutely, they sent a, sent a letter and also attended the meeting, and they're very, very much in favor.
Since I sat on the planning commission, I don't have any questions, so I will leave it to my colleagues to ask any questions.
I'll say, was there any opposition and reasoning for?
None, no, no opposition, there were a couple of people that just had questions as to how big it was gonna be, how many people they might employ, the, the normal questions you would expect. It's in an area of other businesses already, and sets well off of two thirty-six.
Oh, I have no other questions. I have no other questions.
Does he need, does Joe need to read any portion of this? Okay. Do you want to read that part, Joe?
You'll probably read the, the, uh, second, third paragraphs?
Yes.
That about covered?
Yep.
Whereas this zone change proposal proposes to amend the development code, particularly the zone map, as follows. This being the request of ASP Bolt Realty LLC of eighty-seven fifty Pendleton Pike in Indianapolis, Indiana, four six two two six, to rezone parcel number zero two two dash one six three five eight dash zero zero, from General Business, GB, to Light Industrial. Aye, aye. The parcel's located in Fall Creek Township on Weishart Drive.
I'll make the motion to approve the zoning change.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, this is, uh, this has been well-received by Middletown, uh, as evidenced by, by their support. Uh, the family will build, build a new facility, develop it, hope to, uh, employ twenty-five or more folks. It's, it's nice, uh, that they're being welcomed into, into the community, I think they'll, uh, they'll be very good corporate citizens, thank you.
It's my understanding they're moving their, are they moving their business?
Uh, ju, this is a new, a new building, uh, they'll retain their, uh, their present property on, on Pendleton Pike. Jesse Alexander is here, he's the third generation. His son Jeremiah will be in charge of this new plant, they've grown, they need space to expand new products, that's what this facility will do.
Welcome to Henry County.
Welcome to Henry County.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have anything from the Sheriff's Department? Order's office? Memorial Park?
Okay, we think that, uh, next week, RB Jergens will be out of there, they'll be done. And it'll be back in their hands, we'll probably have to wait for a little while to plant grass. But, um, and we've got to work on the spillway a little bit. That old valve didn't seem to seal up enough, so they let some water out, and they're gonna work on it some more, if not, they one of their options is to close it up, because we have another smaller valve on the other side of it, so. And, uh, I think that's it, I think it looks really good myself, but-
It does look good.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mandy here?
Mandy, let me?
Mandy? Nothing, thank you.
Do you have anything, Lisa? Lisa was over here. Looks like you're gonna go all the way down to that's it.
Next, under the quotes and proposals, chem search quote number three-one-six-one-nine-six-one for eighteen hundred dollars.
This is for the, um, chemical treatment, uh, both of these quotes are, uh, for the boiler. That was just repaired in the courthouse. This one is water treatment and service, and the other are filtrages, filters, and, um, but they're both for, Steve, you know more about the chemical treatment at the boiler than I do?
When we had the, there was a leak between the cells of the boiler down there, and when they tore it apart, I expected to see a nasty rusted-up mess. Everyone was surprised that it was not, and they said part of the reason that it was not was the fact that we have been doing these water chemical treatments through that boiler, uh, since it's been here. And I think it's a good idea for us to continue doing so in order to save the life of that boiler. I believe it to be a good heating system that needs to be taken care of. So, with that being said, I make a motion that we approve these. I'll take one away from you, Bobby.
Okay. Uh, I'll second it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Next, we have a Justice Center annual maintenance from Piney and Resolve Tech.
Uh, we had received, uh, Piney's, a, a couple, uh, weeks ago, uh, did just receive the one from Resolve Tech, uh, today. I don't know that if everybody has had an opportunity to review, uh, the Resolve Tech. If not, I would be willing to make a motion to table this until your next meeting, so that there's time to review, if you have not had an opportunity to review.
Say, I personally have not had a chance to go through Resolve Tech, so I would second that motion to table.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second. All right, I made the, I made the motion, you seconded it.
Yeah.
I made the motion, Steve seconded it, you confused me, Joe.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. We have a Ron Lanzar soft water proposal.
So, apparently, uh, I was informed about a week ago, um, that the water softener unit in the Justice Center broke more than fifteen years ago.
Say, oh, he said it's closer to twenty?
Well, I was trying to be nice, it's probably closer to twenty, and it was never, uh, repaired. So I had Greg get a proposal, uh, from Ron Lanzar, because my concern is how much money have we spent on repairing other items, because the water softener was never repaired or replaced in that building. Uh, so the purchase price for a new Puritan water softener, uh, is ninety-six hundred dollars plus tax if applicable, so we won't be paying tax. It will come with two eighteen-by-sixty-five, um, fiberglass mineral tanks with high-capacity resin, and one, uh, thirty-by-fifty salt keepers with a twelve-hundred-pound capacity. The price includes removal of the old equipment and new unit installed on, um, R-three-valve bypass. Um, and then secondary to that, uh, they can deliver either twenty-fifty-pound bags of salt at pickup price for two hundred and two dollars, or they can deliver the salt on a route um, at twelve dollars and ten cents, uh, per fifty-pound bag. So, if you want to start with the water softener piece-
Yeah, cause honestly, the logistics part of the delivering and making sure they can be in the building timeframe and everything else, we may need to discuss with all those involved as far as when the route takes place, what times they'll be able to come in and out, so my two cents worth.
Yeah, so I guess we could, um, I will make a motion to table the, how the salt's delivered until we can talk to other people.
I would second that motion, or that part of that.
Yeah. On, on just that piece, on the delivery of the salt piece?
Yep.
Yep.
Motion's been made, and second on the delivery of the salt. We're gonna stand by on that one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero in regards to the ninety-six hundred dollar purchase price of the eighteen sixty-five twin.
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase price of the new water softener. My guess is we've probably spent more than ninety-six hundred dollars in repairs in twenty years.
I would agree.
For not having soft water, so I will, uh, make the motion to approve.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Next item on the list are, under new business, there, there are bonds to be approved. And I'd like to read all the names of the bonds, and then we'll discuss if we're going to approve them or not at the end, is that okay?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Bill Upchurch, Jody French, Lisa Lovelace, Debbie Walker, Gabe Beatty, Jennifer Grubbs, Stephen Russ, Donna Talber, Joseph Cooper, and Susan Van Hoy, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bonds is presented.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Next, we have Jerry Cash, a request for the Commissioner's Resolution for Affordable Housing Solutions of Henry County, Jerry.
Uh, as we indicated in the communication we sent to you, a group of us that worked with the blight elimination program when it was going on in Newcastle and Henry County have formed a new not-for-profit, uh, Affordable Housing Solutions of Henry County Incorporated. And we're here tonight to ask you to consider, uh, transferring a couple of properties that did not sell in the September property tax sale to this organization. They have-
Move the microphone a little bit closer to you.
Sure. And I have a cold, so I apologize.
That's all right.
They have substandard structures on them that we would be willing to remove from the properties.
So is, is what, Jeff, what you sent yesterday in conjunction with what Jerry's presenting as well?
Yeah. Yeah, come on up. Since we're a newly formed non-five-oh-one-C-three, then I wanted to be able, we, the board, wanted to be able to tell you about us and what we're trying to do this next year, once we get going, but so you would have some background information about, we're doing affordable housing, uh, new construction, and also blight elimination, and so our uh, to get started, we're, we would request these three properties so that they're one's in Bluntsville, one's on, just on the outside of Bluntsville, and then there's a, another one in Moreland. And all three structures, one was, is a fire, the other two have been standing there for a long time, and we just want to be able to those towns are not gonna be able to do anything, so we want to help out with that.
So you list here that you want, you want to work in the communities Newcastle, Middletown, Nice Town, Spice Lane, and Lewisville.
Right.
And I asked you, you know, what about Dunreath and Strong?
Right.
And you, you indicated is because they don't have water. You indicated to me, they ha, we have septic or sewer, but because they don't have water, they're not as preferential?
Right, at this point.
Because Bluntsville doesn't, you're asking for properties in Bluntsville that doesn't have water and sewer?
No, well, well, we're just trying to demolish those structures for blight elimination only.
Okay.
We don't anticipate building structure.
Oh, you don't anticipate building structures?
No, no, uh, because the lots are small, and Bluntsville doesn't have sewer, and those are, there's not enough room for a, a new sewer to put in that area. Yes, Moreland does have sewer, but we're not at this, up to this- Yes, Moreland does have sewer, but we're not at this, up to this point to look at that lot and say we want to be able to put a house on that since we're just getting go, up and going. So, we just want to help with Moreland to, uh, demolish that structure and then if somebody wants the lot or we want to keep it to put a house on it later, but right now we're just-
But you're, you're really not just gonna limit yourself to these towns that you listed here in this?
No.
And I would hate to see Dunreath have something or Strong have something or somebody else have something and because they're not on this list, you go, well, or you're not on the list, so we don't want to do anything with it.
No, that wasn't the intent, was it? Just that we knew that Lewisville, Newcastle, Middletown, Knightstown and Spice Lane had sewer, water and electric. That were all there, made it far simpler to hook in and be able to build a new-
The only thing Dunreath and Strong doesn't have is water. They have sewer, they have sewer and electric.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we're not excluding.
No, 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 you know, we're just trying to get, we knew that by having all three of those, it's gonna make constructing a new home in those towns is gonna be a lot-
So, do you anticipate then selling these properties or what are you gonna do with these properties in Bluntsville once you demolish?
We anticipate giving them away to somebody there. There's somebody next door on both of these. Uh, the one property, the, uh, Cardinal Greenway may want it because it's just between thirty-five and the Cardinal Greenway, it's not very wide uh, there on that one that's just outside of Bluntsville. We're just trying to get through the process to get the tax deed, get the structures down and then see what we want to do, what, what's available to the town or the area, the, for the guy next door, all of that to see. Who, because right now they're sitting there. And nobody can do, is, is doing anything with these three properties.
Basically, it's a continuation of the blight elimination thought pattern that if there's a structure that's not contributing and if it's actually a detriment to the community, then get it off the, get it torn down, clear it out. So, do you have any?
Game transfer, but it didn't sell on accident.
And you're asking at, at this moment, there's two that you're asking about? Three?
Yeah, two, two in Bluntsville are right there and then one in Moreland. And Moreland's, there's a fire and that owner lives in Bluntsville.
Do you have the parcel number? Because the only two that are listed here are the Bluntsville one. Is, in Jerry's email, is it listed in your, in yours?
Oh, yeah, so he sent another email for the one-
Oh, did he? I may, I may not have seen that one. Hang on one second, Jerry.
What, what, what is the date on that?
Uh, this one is... Uh, Joe sent it to, to Heather on the twenty-seventh of November.
Yeah, that would have been the two, the, the, the thirteen parcel number is the one just outside of Bluntsville. The fifteen parcel number is the one in Bluntsville on High Street. And then there's one for twenty, I think it's twenty-three that is Moreland on, on East Main Street.
I don't see it. Can you?
I'll forward it.
You can forward that, yeah, I just don't, doesn't mean because I can't find it on my phone, doesn't mean you get it sent because sometimes it's difficult to-
But you think so, it doesn't mean I did either.
Well, I, I'm-
Forget to hit send. Sometimes I forget to hit send.
Do you, do you need to know the parcel number for Moreland? I can-
Do we need to know the parcel number for approval?
Yeah.
These two are for, but we don't have the one for Moreland.
It, it's two oh eight East Main. Yes. I have, I have the parcel number with me. Okay, okay.
You know, we attempted to do a county land bank and all of the, we sent out letters to all of the, um, entities that would need to participate in the county land bank and we received one response only. Yeah, so, uh, that kind of-
Steve's got a question.
I'm, I'm waving you down for the microphone. He thought I was, he thought I was using a different finger.
Okay, so we sell this, well, you give it to them, you sell it. So, why don't we put it back into that township? If you resell it, whatever money they sell it for goes back into that township. I mean, it's nonprofit. Let's benefit that township.
You need to ask two guys standing behind you.
So, I'm just saying, you know, we have these every year.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, and it's great you guys do this, I, I'm all for it. But, you know, townships could use the money. Let's keep it in the, in the township and put it back in the county.
My only thought on that would be we will have some costs that we'll incur in doing this if we could subtract those costs out of that.
Oh, sure.
Take that out of the cost.
Yeah.
Sure.
Take it out of the cost, but put it back in the township. I mean, that's, that, that'd be good for everybody.
I guess it's-
But, well, the purpose is to get the, the, the structures down because right now it's a detriment, there's nobody paying any property taxes on that, on those. So, as we said earlier, we were either gonna try to sell it, but first we would try to give it back to somebody next door or across the street. But somebody in Bluntsville or somebody in Moreland and, uh, and there's, there's a guy to this west of one, the one, on the one that's on thirty-five in Blue River Town, uh, I mean, Stony Creek Township, so... They may want that parcel and it's gonna be on the property taxes and they'll be paid and collected then.
That's great. But if we don't, let's go to the second, let's get it back to the township and sell it.
At this point, we, we're fine with giving it to the township trustee and they can do what they want with it.
Yeah, I, I would advocate that we do that after we cover any costs that we incur.
Oh, yes.
Well, yeah, I mean, you guys, you-
Come on, you guys are just-
I thought you were just being generous.
Well, eh, we're not gonna re, be able to recover our, all costs to be able to dump, demolish these structures. We, we know that. Yeah, you know, it's five hundred dollars.
I'm not sure what kind of structure they're even sitting on, but yeah.
Pardon me?
I said, I'm not sure what structures are sitting on them as far as size or anything else, but yeah, I mean, it's gonna, not gonna be cheap for you to do this. And then, and understandably so, you need to recover your cost, I get that.
Well, the, the main purpose of doing this is blight elimination. So, we're gonna take that upon ourselves to, for the cost. And we don't know that there'll be anybody that's really interested in the lots, but we're willing to get those back on the ta, tax rolls because that's the purpose of, of what we want to try to do and it's, structures are not in very good shape and then the third one is burnt. So, and the, the town of Moreland can't do anything with the owner. So, we're just trying to step in and help.
I don't know if we can see that far. That's one of the structures.
What's that?
That's the one on High Street.
It's a possibility.
On Beacon.
Does, does the, uh, owner, the owner of the two properties in the Bluntsville area is in New Jer, New Jersey? And he's got judgments against him, so we are a hundred percent sure he is not gonna take care of these structures.
Oh, yeah. I was just looking, won't say the name.
Yeah.
But they're, they're from out of state?
Yeah.
But they are from out of state.
So, are these properties that just sold in this tax sale?
They did not.
But I mean, did not sell in this last tax sale?
Yeah.
They still have a chance to redeem. Their redemption period's not up for a year.
Well, we, when we go through this process here, we're getting these from you all and they still, there's a still a four month redemption period that we have to go through with the owner. So, they get notified of this. And, and then if there isn't a-
Before there's even a redemption?
Were these ones that actually sold?
Were not sold in this last tax sale.
Okay, yeah, I think the, there's a commissioners-
Right.
Okay.
See, I think you do it, there's a separate redemption period.
Okay.
So, there's another four months?
Yeah, there's a period every year.
Okay, okay.
Right. You know, we've got an attorney that, we're gonna go through that process.
Jeff, what did you say?
I said, we have an attorney and we're going through that redemption process that is associated with the commissioner's process. So... That typically takes five months to be able to go to the court, to petition the court after the redemption period's over. And then the, the judge issues the, the, uh, request for tax deed to be transferred to us.
So, what is our process at this point?
I'm just looking at the tax record.
Basically, you have to approve transfer from all commissioners to get these properties due to a non-problem. And then at that, they, and it's their burden to go through the process of getting a tax deed. Yeah, I said, notice is everybody who has an interest in the property.
Right.
And they have a period of four months to be, and if they don't, they have to file action with court asking for tax deed, it's another at least thirty, forty-five days of period. You've got to then provide the same part of the question, requesting tax deed. So, it is like Jeff said, it's a four to six month process, please.
Yeah.
Before they have that title property, if we're able to tear that out of this country.
It's the same process that Newcastle Land Bank goes through, that, that he shepherds. So... And every one of these properties have judgments on them and so they have to clear those judgments to be able to retain the property. And, and if they don't, they, they don't want to redeem them, then those judgments still stay at, at record with the court, but they are also included in these particular parcels here. So, the judgments don't go away, the re, the real estate's just released so that we can get clear title to it.
Any other comment, conversation?
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's, uh, we got a lot of structures throughout the county that are sitting vacant, dilapidated that probably need to be poured down and something done with them. But I am interested, it had, going forward, in our eyes, these properties may not be prime examples, but what Steve brought up makes sense to me. It goes, if there's something left there, especially a center of, uh, nonprofit, that that money would go back to those townships because they probably could use some extra assistance. If you'd be open to that discussion in the future.
Sure. But we also know that they don't have the money to tear down the structures now and we're coming in to do that, so that definitely is a help to the township and the towns. Yeah.
So, was that in the form of a motion?
Well, see, I was debating on whether to make him because since this is your
Oh, my last meeting?
Official meeting, I've been letting you make all the motions to Sydney, that's why I said I stole one from you earlier.
Uh, I'll make the motion to transfer these three properties, seventy-six thirty-nine East High Street in Bluntsville, seventy-five eighty East US thirty-five in Bluntsville and two oh eight East Main Street in Moreland to the Affordable Housing Solutions of Henry County. I'm not sure how to add in anything with the, how to word it with, uh, anything going back to the towns or the township with the property. I'm not sure exactly how to word that in a motion.
I think sending a list of ready access proceeds, parcel of ready access proceeds above cost of demolition.
Stays either within the town or the township. What Joel Harvey just said.
Yeah.
So, my motion plus what Joel Harvey said.
Is that reasonable with you guys?
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
I'll second that motion.
Motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Extension contractual services agreement.
This is for, um, Purdue four H or between four, four H between Purdue and the county. This is a standard, um, agreement, I think, that we have signed for four years.
So, what we have before us is the extension, extension contractual services agreement. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three zero. Next, we have the Justice Center roof discussion. On or about September the twenty-seventh, there was a considerable wind that passed through this neck of the woods and did some damage to the east roof of the Justice Center. We've had the insurance adjuster come and, come and look at the roof and we had, we have paid, I believe, twenty-five hundred dollars uh, in order to, I think it was twenty-five hundred in order to repair or make temporary repairs. It's thirty-three twenty-nine for the temporary repairs. Then the traveler's insurance policy in regards to that, we have ten thousand dollar deductible, so that money came out of our pocket. In order for us to make more permanent repairs to that specific section of the roof, we have to decide whether we're going to repair just that specific section and basically insurance due to the ten thousand dollar deductible is not really gonna help us out.
Paying zero.
Paying zero. So, then the other option with, um, a couple of the contractors that we had up there on the roof, they made the decision that there were several, um, problems with that roof. And then just evidenced by the last rain we had a couple of days ago, we had water coming in which may have been a window problem, not a roof-related problem, but there are some situations in the Justice Center where there's water intrusion. So...
I think we need to put this out to, uh, bid. I think we have to do an RFP, um, because of the, sorry, I'm sitting too far away from my microphone. Because of the initial, uh, what we, we're told is gonna take to repair that building or that roof, um, I think we need to put it out to RFP, uh, because it more than surpasses the threshold, uh, for that. So, I, I'm just gonna make the motion that we put it out to, an RFP is put out for the, uh, repair of the Justice Center roof. And then you guys can make the decision next year.
Yeah, I had the, I had Joel, uh, help prepare a, an RFP. Basically, I was holding off on sending it out because seeing what the insurance said and then see what the commissioners said about it. I guess one question is, do we need to have further discussions or, or more people look at the roof to decide whether the whole roof needs to be replaced or just replace what's been damaged by the wind on the twenty-seventh of December?
So, it's my understanding that that's the original roof, which means it's in excess of twenty years old?
My, my, I've been told that, that it was roofed twenty-four years ago. And then in two thousand nine, the roof, the, the shingle portion of the roof was replaced by a different company because, and that was, that was done under warranty from the first company that did it, but the second company that came in and did the work under warranty. So, it's, as you stand, look at it, it's actually about fifteen years old plus or minus, but it's the discussions that a couple of the different roofing contractors had to say about what appeared to be hail damage when the, 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 uh, adjuster for the insurance company says that's not hail damage and then the contractors go, we work roofs every day, that, that- that's not hail damage, and then the contractors go, we work roofs every day, that that's hail damage.
Going to, on that one, the insurance has final say of whether it's hail damage or not.
I understand.
Obviously, because we got zero, we got zero dollars.
And we had zero hail on the twenty-seventh September, and so she did say that if you thought it was gonna be hail damage, then you had to file another claim. Well, she was there, she crawled all over the roof, took pictures, and she knows what she saw this time, and she said, nope. So I don't know that her answer's gonna change if we file the second claim. So I can submit, I can put out a, a re- request for proposal for the entire roof, or I could put out a request for proposal for this section that is clearly, uh, clearly shown in these plans as to what was damaged on the twenty-seventh of September.
Can we do both? Can we send it out as, for repair what's damaged, and have them look at the rest of the roof and give us their estimate as far as life expectancy, what's left, and a price of total replacement? This way we'd have both numbers from each company.
We can do that for single replacement, we can also throw in an alternate bid of doing a metal roof.
Yeah, you can do however you want to.
Well.
The only thing I would, uh, make sure if somebody knows a roof, they need to know where our specs are.
Yes.
Just, just, if it is, if they're, uh, different quality, period, that, and may not, that. Send out a request proposal to give us a new roof.
Yeah.
Building, and then get, wear and close.
Yep.
That's what I'll do then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, we have owner occupied rehabilitation announcement.
So I did receive an update from, uh, Harry Riley at ARA, and through the application process, uh, they had an overwhelming, uh, response for the program. Um, and they are actually, actually, they said they're gonna push the announcement date. Um, but when I got this email, it was, uh, December the ninth. Uh, the announcement date is tomorrow, uh, for who, um, will be accepted into the program for the owner occupied rehabilitation project. That's all on that one.
Thank you. Mine Mechanics?
So this is in, um, this is, we received this, um, from Kristen Manning and, um, from Kristen Manning of Mine Mechanics. Her business, uh, they're both, or they're both psychiatric mental health nurse practitioners, and they've partnered with the Henry County Justice System, specifically judges and court, and with them, as well as Susan Lightfoot with Henry County Probation and the Henry County Health Department. They are providing medication assistance treatment to those appropriate offenders whose charges are alcohol or drug related. Specifically, they diagnose and treat underlying mental health illnesses, as well as trade, treating their substance use disorder with the injectable medication Vivitrol. Vivitrol is a once a month injection, it is not a controlled substance, it's not habit-forming, and can't be legally sold to others, as can methadone or suboxone. It blocks opioid receptors, therefore, those receiving the monthly injection will not experience the same effects from alcohol or opioids. Vivitrol also reduces cravings for these substances. Acceptance in this program and adherence to the treatment will allow these offenders to work on sobriety through active participation in therapy or through attendance in alcohol, Alcoholics Anonymous. This program's duration is three hundred and sixty-five days. Vivitrol is an expensive medication, and the concern is for those offenders with high copay insurance, or those offenders with no insurance being accepted into this program. One Vivitrol injection costs one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty cents. We are hoping that you will consider granting Mine Mechanics a portion of the opioid settlement fund in order to utilize this money to help fund those who would otherwise be unable to be admitted into this program. Unfortunately, mental health disorders con- continue to be on the rise. Current programs have not been effective at long-term sobriety. This program is novel, uh, for most other MAT programs, as well as those hopeful that also treating the underlying mental health disorder, along with the substance use disorder, will allow these individuals the best chance at lifelong recovery. With this program, we expect to see a reduced recidivism rate, which ultimately will save the county money, as these offenders will no longer require incarceration for offenses related to alcohol or substance use. I appreciate your consideration in this matter, and should you need any further information on this program, please do not, uh, hesitate to contact me, Christina Manning. This Vivitrol, I remember when Sheriff McCorkle was still here, uh, it was brought up, and it was very expensive. Not sure, um, all of the specifics of it, but I know I had talked to Angela Cox, um, about this program that they are wanting to start. Um, I know we had created a committee for a- any use of the opioid funds. Um, and then they would vet all of that process, so, um, well, I think it's a wonderful program, and I hope it moves through. Um, I think that we need to, um, we need to table a decision on this and hand it over to the opioid committee for them to vet and make recommendations.
I would second that.
Motion been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Next, we have the police protection agreement for twenty twenty-five.
This is the same agreement you do every year, Matt? You just changed the date. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the police protection agreement for twenty twenty-five with the sheriff's department and, yeah, your name. Spice, and Spice.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Keystone contract?
Uh, so this was the, uh, fuel bids for the county that Mandy, um, so graciously worked on and put together. Um, and we took this under, they were the only one that bid, uh, and we took this under advisement, and they have since, uh, created a contract for us to approve, uh, should we decide, I mean, we only got one bid, and I guess we don't really have much, we do have a choice, but, uh, it's just the contract. Any questions for Mandy? The one change is it is under the, the contract is with the Henry County Commissioners. And we've got it set up that it's easier for invoicing as well, everybody.
I have no questions. I have no questions.
With that, I'll make the motion to accept the Keystone contract for fuel for Henry County.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And our books are that contract price extension agreement that we've already gone over with, with Joe Copeland. So that's already been taken care of. Next, our appointments. We have a recommendation for a reappointment of Beth Pribble to the Henry County Cemetery Commission.
Make a motion to reappoint Beth Pribble to the Henry County Cemetery Commission.
Say it.
Motion been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We also have a motion to reappoint Kathy Eke as Henry County Public Defender, and along with that, we have a contract to sign in regards to that.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract for Kathy Eke, public defender.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Kathy. We have a, a reappointment for Kenny Cox, Cheryl Tishner, Henry County Tourism Commission.
I'll make the motion to appoint Kenny Cox and Cheryl Tishner to the tourism commissions.
Say it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We have a reappointment for John Madison and Paul Jansen and David Grattner to the redevelopment commission. All those in favor? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint John Madison, Paul Jansen, and David Grattner.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, and second all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone from the bleachers have anything to say? Anybody? We thank you for your attendance tonight. Before we leave, I wanna make a special effort to recognize Bobby Plummer with a certificate.
Please don't.
Here. Commissioner Steve, would you stand up and take it, take our picture?
Oh, yeah.
This, okay.
Steve doesn't get to be in the picture.
Henry County Government hereby awards this certificate of service to Bobby Plummer in recognition of having successfully served as Henry County Commissioner from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Bobby, for your time and your effort, and want to put Bobby in the middle. There.
I asked him not to do anything.
A rose between two roses.
A rose between teeth, arm. Thank you. Thank you, Joey. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments toward Commissioner Plummer? You're welcome to speak up or forever hold your peace.
No swear words allowed. Steve? No, kidding, I'm kidding. Uh, I just wanna say, um, it has been an honor. Uh, first, I wanna thank my colleagues, both past and present, um, all other elected officials, department heads, um, and employees of the county. Uh, but most importantly, I wanna thank the citizens of Henry County. Uh, it has been a pleasure to serve for the last four years. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Did you thank the attorney?
Oh. I thank you every week for everything you do. After every meeting, I do, I thank.
Motion's been made to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.